Yeah, yeah.
I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Um.
All right. Call or order our regular monthly meeting will be. Village of Triversburg, Board of Trustees. It's called Snowy Night. Uh, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I would like to add talking about a grant opportunity. I can do that under my. Report, but just wanted to call that out.
Anything else? So we have our consent agenda, which includes. Meeting minutes from our October twentieth meeting. As well as monthly abstract, general fund abstract totally three hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Water fund totaling twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and five cents. Sure, fun totaling forty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Someone went to move the consent agenda.
So.
Comments, questions, or need to pull anything out of said. Uh, hearing none, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, we say aye.
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 Poses, extensions. Um, Jess, where do I see this on tonight's agenda?
Um, tonight's agenda should be under, oh, business is due, should I not? Okay, that's fair on my part. Uh, would be potentially old business.
Yep. What is it? We have one more.
Oh, got it. Uh, Ruth.
Seal the vent totally. Um, we do not have any members of the public president person are online. We do not have any representatives at this time. So we'll move right to reports from this board. The only item I have. At the moment is. Our what has become a monthly. Tradition of do we need a second meeting? If we do, I will need it moved off of the twenty-fourth. We don't see these how best Thanksgiving week. You know, always push it to December or wait for a regular.
I don't think there's anything that I'm aware of.
Yes, let's. Notice the cancellation of our meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Which takes us to fire version two.
Yeah, we had the forty-one calls this month. We're now at three eighty-three for the year, and it's looking like a little over sixty. Calls over what we did last year in the easy anticipate, it's rise.
Um, already sixty or more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. They had burger night Tuesday night at the end of November. Um, and when wish they invited at uh, to Yankin, they invited all of the firemen to come. And the proceeds from that burger night. They um, gave them a hundred and fifty dollars, which they met or which they added in addition to so. Um, the fire company got two hundred and fifty dollars from Burger Night Fund to be in there. So that was a nice thing for them to do. Um, there's really no other reporting. They just um, decided they had a debacle with fire supervision day. The school got their dates mixed up. And it ended up working out, but they decided to have every year from now on, it's gonna be the Friday night of homecoming. And nobody got their their dates messed up. And the fundraising golf tournament has been set for July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-six. Um, to raise money, so. Um, in all vehicles are shifts. We still have one truck. That needs to have the valves redone, and it's our twenty-four-year-old truck. And they may have to be custom made and man still running that through. Um, insurance. And he figured the truck has to be fixed anyway if we're gonna get anything out, but we're trading them. So still waiting whether that's possibly gonna be covered or not. Other than that. Nothing else.
Hey. Um, EMS Youth Street Tree Advisory. Um, so, sorry, you. Last meeting weeks ago. Um, going into. The winter for us means the close of the wedding season town. Um, I think we're looking good. We're looking at a percent increase being requested up in the village for the next year. Uh, aside from that. No real substantial moves. And so we're on program to take place. Uh, we just applied when we went a few months ago. That's been going very well. Um. So yeah, we should forward uh, for EMS. I cannot see the access when caller report. I'm gonna skip that. I emailed out for this month. Um. Run if you may be correcting if I'm wrong, but I was starting to pull. Couple days ago, who mentioned that we had one day. One weekend day where we covered the city of the uh. Want to say there's in the double digits, Saturday, November first. Yeah, give them the number. There's some obscene number. A lot of times we're told, but I don't know if we actually went every time, but. Double digits, uh, double digits. Well, he goes, oh, it was in the teens. Like it was a lot of sort of a lot of times. I also want to drive it and discover. The entire night of technically one. Probably.
Oh.
Why then? So, uh, not a good, not a good evening to listen to caller work definitely. But. There's that. Um. The other pieces that I had and like just for bringing the agenda that I wanted to talk about. Uh. So a few months back, when we moved, we got better than once because our second hit was in the shop. Um. Joel's been looking into selling that in the sense, but right now it's just sitting at the station. And the best bid, he was expecting for fashion saying, hopefully to get about thirty thousand. The best bids, the best offers, I should say that he'd find like five thousand. Which is just really sad.
He was a mid-end for food truck.
Didn't have to be really about that. Um, but so the question arises, I know Gordon really wants to move toward, well, no. But my understanding is that you have a desire to make some promises. I'm pretty available. Available. I don't wanna stab. Yes, yeah, and I show this in here. And we've talked about that coming up in a new and since it's delivered, right? Um. Says delivered me. So right ahead, I'm all, is it me?
I was looking at you, so I'm always to be seen.
Pretty sure it's me. Oh, I thought you were a question.
No, it's.
Reasonable story, but.
Okay.
Um. But the question becomes. We have an opportunity now. We could basically get a stretcher. Sort of outfit this third ambulance so that we have it ready. Um. We are in position where we use it. Joel and I have some sense like differences of feeling like it's necessary versus. Want want versus need kinds of situation. But right now I did not put this on the agenda because I just to get this idea into all of our heads so you can think about it. Is the idea of moving the brand on this, we equipped this one right now. It could be sort of a bridge to gain us to just bring something that we want. Um. Or we could hold off till then. But the bigger bigger question is the month three. Uh, we sort of, we talked about it when we ordered the ambulance now, seven months ago, and I just had a thought break that since then, it was felt like a good opportunity. To get about to, um. Joel is not here. I think when we really discussed this, when she hadn't been here to answer questions, and he's trying to pull some more detailed solid reports than we used as far as like how much we related we're getting. Um. How often we're getting second call, right? Because my call report is beefy just districts. So I wanted to get a better idea of how often is the fly car going out? How are two calls going out the same? To share. Uh, so if there's questions or thoughts, have you got to take that now? Otherwise, just. But you know.
Do we have a place in the store? Is there a room?
No.
No.
Not really. I mean, right now it's the inside. It's been sitting on some sort of behind the fire party playing with. Uh. But it's inconvenient because Joel's been driving it weekly upon place.
Take them off.
From seizing up. So right now we got bios stays usually just on the side or on there. Uh, but no, there is no great place to keep it. Can't drive, which which is not a huge problem. That means if someone goes down on the first ball, we told it back. You put the second group back then to. So that's, that's manageable somewhat less than ideal.
It is a working car now.
Yes.
It did.
Yes, you did finish the repairs.
Yeah.
They just took lots and lots. And then you have to do one back in how it would be for, we got that though.
So we have. We have a fly car, our primary ambulance, uh, back like a secondary kind of ambulance, and then this would be a third. What's that look like? So I'm I'm thinking in general, you want one just kind of. In case like something breaks or whatever. So this is kind of like having a fly car plus two kind of in regular-ish rotation. Is that the idea?
Well, generally, so generally speaking, isn't the primary. Except on that, so it's really the two primaries that rotate. Uh, and the advantage there that just the two ambulance system is.
Right. So you don't want one just like sitting by. Right. So yeah, right. So if we had just the two. There's always, they're always kind of being swapped back and forth.
Right.
But basically, we're only this, we're only staffing. Right.
Although we do. Somewhat for again, this is why I should have Joel. But I wanna say probably twenty-four hours a week now we have staff that say.
I see.
Joel is doing Mr. Time now. Um, and we will have so.
So is that the idea of that's where the two come from? Like? Some parts.
Like it's like once in the shop.
Sorry, like two kind of. On duty in a given day, uh, at at the same time. I don't, I don't know the right words here, but like.
Three angles.
But we have enough for two, and so having a third as a backup slash like in rotation so that if something happens, we can maintain two is what you're kind of pointing at.
And we could certainly like we could periodically. Drive. For sure. Uh, and I think Joel primary use case is like, we go and you know, say at the football game, right? That's that's one out already. Or if one's in the shop or whatever it is that takes them out. It's pretty easy to line up in a scenario where you're just having given the group to save our son. Also, so it's it's if we had three that would be used. Uh.
We would, we would do.
Have to be completely outfitted. I mean, could we use? That third ambulance just to like go sit at a football game where.
So the point is what we what we don't have or have is a stretcher.
Um.
That's missing and that's.
That's okay.
Uh, Joel's envisioning, you know, not buying a new stretcher. Uh. Cause it wouldn't see a lot of.
Right.
Use. Uh, I think in all practical purposes right now, the bottom cost.
And when we're at like a football game or something, that is, we have an extras. That's in like a next to staffing situation. That's not just like whoever's on call.
I do.
Right. Assuming we have enough people for all these things. My hunch in general is that the equipment cost is so minimal compared to the staffing cost that. I don't really have a strong opinion, and I probably lean towards like, let's have it available. Seeing as we're getting called on it more, but it. Only continues to lean us into this underlying actual problem of.
Well, that's kind of the, that's why I wanted to bring it up is that that's kind of an easy decision. And then if he comes, the slivers. Three.
Exactly. Maintain and ensure.
And also have to have replacement capable.
Right.
Right? So we're. The the whole thing.
Replace three ambulances. I should assume this one clocked out and it began, but.
Well, but I think what we're saying like. What we're kind of saying is that we're gonna have, we have three now. We'll have, we don't do anything. We'll have four in six months, right?
If you have.
Yeah, that's the same.
Exactly.
Was, I mean, we.
There, maybe there's a strategic question of like, if we don't have the equipment, then we can't get called out for it, which is a terrible way to think, but is. Absolutely the only unfortunately reasonable way to think somehow in this situation.
Pointing. So there's two. I have a parallel or they used to be parallel lines. Once our fall numbers that have been slowly going up. And until some of these, you know, mutually, there are also at least two. In in Canada, but those lines are no longer parallel, right? So like mutually headlines is is asking. A difficult rate. So you're exactly right. I mean, the question here is. Do our currently contracted. Municipalities. And us want to underwrite. Mutual aid that we're providing and to what degree? Uh. But I think if you ask Joel or you ask any of our staff. They see patient care to patient care like we need to just be there and, you know, do everything we can in every single split week. And I think that's super, super valid. We get to play the policymaker game of sort of. Like what's our? What's our obligation here?
Where I know we were talking about the county changing. Contract, something, whatever, so that we may not have to owe, like, we don't have to respond if we have only one ambulance left. Do we know where that's going? Did I? Properly address.
I know. Uh, this. Usually that on effect, a little. I think the region is approved of it. And with the state is approved of it, but it's it's in the. In the approval process, county, I think is hoping to have it. Maybe by the new year. Ready to, ready to have the agencies. The agencies that are willing to sign. Side.
So that's close, but that's still if we have three, then.
Yeah.
We still want more that it can go in theory.
And when it's that, it does become gross.
Right.
In really ones doesn't need, we have it stat and then it go.
Right. And I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to our towns as well. This. EMS thing is really spiraling crazy. You know, it's gonna get to a point where we just can't afford all this.
There's flying the S V drone same.
Yeah, yeah. And um, I don't think we need to be. Adding, you know, cause there's gonna come a point where everybody's gonna throw up their hands and just say, you can't. We can't do this.
Third, yeah.
And it doesn't look like the state is gonna help us.
Me, I may, and it's definitely moving in the direction to sort of.
I mean.
The flow of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. I had a conversation with the nursing director at the hospital over the weekend. And she said, one of the reasons why there is a problem is because. They have patients that they need to discharge, say for like physical therapy, or they can't go home. They've gotta go to Beach Tree. They've gotta go. Somewhere else for rehab. By law. Those patients. Can't just let them out the door. Family can't bring them. They have to be transported by an ambulance. So what is happening is. The hospital calls Bangs. Bangs is just transporting people. To rehabs or nursing homes or whatever. And, I mean, it's not really life-saving, but then it leaves us. To pick up the slack. So they're really just doing transports. And then we're picking up the slack for the big stuff.
I think where I come down. And I'm only lightly holding to this is that if we get to the point where we are. We feel comfortable not responding to these mutual aid calls if we only have one ambulance left, which I think we're, I'm either already there or close to. And I think that protects us from here. And I think the actual cost is really people like, yes, this is. A few hundred thousand dollars, which is not nothing, but spread across the entire budget. It's not particularly a lot either. I lean mostly towards, let's have a third ambulance around. Because it's kind of a small thing, but the thing for me, the line to draw is on people hours. Like we, you know, if we're gonna go beyond this kind of like, it's very cool that we've jerry-rigged kind of while it happens that our administrator's around and it happens that there's someone else who's kind of like a deputy, but they're mostly there for paper, but they can also drive an ambulance. Cool, great. I really don't see us taking the next step unless something else dramatically changes. So that's where I would draw my line particularly. I wouldn't mind having a third ambulance around. I would mind having really any more extension of personnel hours.
And I think we have to be aware of how that works. Right? That if we have more ambulances, the people that are paying the taxes in the towns that are.
Yeah.
Contributing are gonna go. More ambulances for, you know.
I will say, I don't think for it.
Right, but I mean.
I think that's a little more extreme. Uh.
I think, I think what it's saying is it's acknowledging that we're being. Creative in having these two other people. Working in the front office, doing paperwork and administrative work that they should already really do, but they're. Enabled to go out and respond to a call if they need to during kind of regular business hours. I think that's actually rather creative and actually really great use of like how we're being kind of. Responsible for financially. To do that, we we to do that well, we need three ambulances because you want to have two ambulances and one. In reserve now.
Yeah.
Here, I agree. I mean, you. I can play the other argument, which is say, then let's do two opportunistically, and if one breaks. And we only have the two and one breaks, then we're just down, then they can't do the second call until we fix it. And like, that's life. Like, I could also see that argument just as easily. So like. To me. I agree, the optics are hard, but when you take a kind of like over the entire budget of we're pushing over a million dollars. Yeah. To to say that the way to to do this, because we already have it here, to do it is to buy a stretcher for a few thousand dollars. I I don't mind on that front. That's kind of where my head comes down. I agree, there's an optics to it, and I think we have to be careful about it, but I think I would say. The reality is we already had it because we had to have it because we had one out for so long. And now for a few thousand dollars, we can keep it around and keep it in active rotation. I think that's probably. A reasonable trade off. It's not that we're buying a brand new ambulance just to have it sit around.
Right.
And actually, in terms of replacement scales, so. So we could just. I just not have it. So there, I mean, there is a definite. Uh. But it's all right. I'll just, I'm not maybe not. But I'm happy to just sort of put opinion in this until we have to all with like the specific questions. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a, other than specifics on the stretcher spend. I don't think there's a reason. To keep. Whichever it was eighteen of one or eighteen of one, I don't think there's a reason to keep it out of service. And rusting in the parking. Yeah, I don't think there's. This reference. Right. So so other than that spend. If if the spend is reasonable, I don't know that there's a reason. To keep it out of service just because we don't want to have that third ambulance available. Not like we're gonna be staffing. And the ability to staff.
Right.
Two. So it's more like. Or I can't, I can't see a situation of, unless it's a one-off situation where. Somebody is sitting in a football game. And all of those breaking loose and Joel happens to have extra help that in it. Can't imagine seeing all three of them pro. It would be, I mean, the most, most likely scenario is gonna be some. Are. Available. But yeah, I agree. It's very, very unlikely they all. But I think having it. Yes. Cause one of the other two goes at the shop. Will sort of keep them.
That was a question. Also, I'm ninety-five percent sure this is already a shirt and we're moving.
Oh, it's absolutely on the security. Yeah, Joel's been driving me right.
Yeah.
Ready to keep it. It's on the.
So in a sense, like already paid.
Yes.
Right.
Cause I thought eight thousand man are used.
Well, there's two business.
Without the assistance. That just exists.
Well, it's so it's yes.
Right?
Yeah, but it's also the fastener. That holds it to the floor. I mean.
And so it's.
Recanableize for the. The new used one.
Okay.
Right. And I mean, the, cause the other question is if we go down, like, could you pull a stretcher from it? So like. I'm assuming that's what's happening now. Now you kind of.
So. I don't know exactly. But basically it's high as grace when you're driving. I mean, they they tie. I mean, this is not a problem. You know. But yeah, we had to can't let them. The new used one, that everything was sort of taken out. I believe Joel and Tony were there until like two or three AM one day. Just for fun color for that story, but. Yes. It's not like we can just kind of swap that right now. Uh. But so we could, I mean, if it sounds like we want to go this route, we could certainly. Uh. Go for. We could approve up to fifteen thousand for a striker six fifty power rebel XT and a striker performance load system. If we want to or Joel is not expecting this, so we have been in several top.
What was the number one with them?
Like, yeah.
I was. Yeah, I mean, I would like that.
Hmm.
I'd I'd say to have Joel come in and.
Yeah.
Talk us through it.
That he is, he's happy with that.
Yeah, that is more than I. Cause I had in my head.
That's altogether that a solid reserve. Actually, they reserve, you know, doing this is what we have, they have this question. If you're there, you're, you're just on the October report, so that's a realistic question.
Yeah. And we also, there's different options as far as well. That'd be great. And that conversation perfectly segues to the next one. Uh, this again is just me reminding all of you of the first fifteen we've had before. Uh, but. Joel and, well, most of Joel has been working on writing updates to our personnel policy, mostly sick and personal time. Uh, one of the reasons that we struggle with what we do. Uh. One of the reasons that Joel can make tonight is that he's been working like. Other devil needs, right? Because you know, when everyone's calling us, he's the one. Uh, it's really, really not sustainable. That's why we burned through the strickers. Really, but quickly, the stress is just a lot. Uh. So he has been working on ways to curb that. The way we're thinking about doing it now is essentially inserting a new Florida village personnel policy just for EMS staff, see these policies. Uh, next up, Joel has prepared some grand, a sheriff guy. And then we'll come back to this board soon. Um. But I wanted to bring up again, just so you know, on top and online and also. So that's out there and it's public, but this has been. It's been a long-term lead. But that's it. I'll labor that. That's all I got.
There are any. Is there any like details that are worth sharing of like how you, how he sees managing that situation? I can. The uh, power dynamics and incentives in a space where we can't seem to hire enough EMS people. Seems hard to.
So. I mean, without mentioning, I think the premise here is not to limit. The benefits, right? But just to make them. To sort of target their use a little bit more effectively, right? So people frequently will call in no time before the next shift, so you can't get someone to come. There's a lot of people who use sick time when they couldn't get approval for vacation time, and there's just no backup required for those things. So a lot of it is just. Trying to standardize. And make more predictable the way that being that those policies that already exist.
Yeah.
Right. So it's really more required patient plus there, like how would you actually use this instead of just. Uh, we used to do it this way, you know, with.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just willy-nilly.
Right.
Uh, that's the major thrust of it. Uh, there is some part we kind of flirted with the idea of. Having mandated call-ins, so having someone who's kind of on call.
Hmm.
Person doesn't show up just so that it's not always. Uh. We've talked. Well, there's a couple other little.
Like doing their rotating on call list, like somebody calls in and there's somebody next in line gets called.
Right, right. Again, so it's not always.
Right.
That fully bag and so that people know.
I'm surprised they haven't had that before. A lot of departments do that.
It's very standard, right? And Sheriff's Department, well, we have some of the guys. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I like that though, because it. What's the? It's not that you're just always screwing your boss over by saying you're not coming in. It's you're screwing your. Partner over your.
Well.
Colleague.
The thing that really gets under my. This is just sort of a personal. Bro, uh, is the the catch twenty-two of being the supervisor means you are always, you're always there. You're always the one who gets stuck. But that also means you make so much money in overtime. That we have this devil thing. But that also means you make so much money in overtime that we have this double thing where like eight, you're, you know, that's a hate to exaggerate that way, right? But it is really a struggle and a challenge to do that, to just be called. And then also making kind of a scene on. Right? Because you're making a huge amount of overtime. So there's like the, you know, the, the whispers start in that corner like, I'll be here, maybe whatever. And like, I was a big part of what, what made Christmas time, you know, was EMS or administrator pretty toxic, just like you know, just the room and all about. So it's really double edged and really toxic, just getting every kind of a play. Which is why the thrust of the rhythm player.
Yeah.
Actually works.
Yeah.
Because we're just not sharing the load of those of all.
Yeah.
But I hope for next month, first December, while guys review and have something sort of concrete to share, discuss. Cause that will, that will be huge.
Well, if there's any sort of like backup on call list, I think that I'd be very strongly in support of that because I think that shares the burden across the whole department rather than just always putting Joel the whole time.
Yeah, that's a fun dynamic to your vision.
I have some concern and I'm sure to be investigated by a guy that a separate personnel policy for a department within the we want. Other than the unionized DPW. The, the benefit on like sick time and all of that, the police department has standard operating procedures, particularly to the police department that are their departmental manual, but they don't have like a separate personnel policy. And I'm not sure, but then to happen to us.
I said, you just said note that's in our personal policy, clarify the policy outside of the personal policy.
That's why I'm, I'm confused, but.
Department, departments we want to, it's just a lot of work.
Yeah, we just haven't.
We have technically the DPW. We'd be here in either town, but it's still a separate bill of funds. And in this case, it would really fall out and I would have a very good idea about how we did it. But I think the structure is easier and it's separate departmental box. So we driving the trip here and the reason that we're going back to sort of doing it for these reasons because of the formation. We're a little bit hesitant to just dive into the water on our own.
There's still.
There's that thing still, you mean, I don't know much about the details in that we shared by it. It's, it's kind of confusing. But yeah, that's our which on this way. But so I guess hopefully next, next meeting, we'll have some concrete at least to review. But that's it. It's my long winded update. Okay, we're going to press pause. Annie Corbin has joined us from Towns County. Annie, if you can hear me, we want to take a step back in time to your section of the agenda. So.
See, you're, you're trolling us with your background.
Yes.
That's right. That's why I couldn't get out of the house. There's this big snow drift from a couple of years ago. Uh, so thanks for letting me uh come in late and I apologize. I believe I missed at least the last two meetings uh with you guys. Uh, budget, budget, budget and other things. So, uh, and that's the first thing that I have to talk to you about for is with the county budget. So we have still our tentative budget that we're looking at. Hopefully we'll vote on that later this month. If not latest, early December. A lot of moving parts still. Uh, so I'll give you the rundown is right now we're looking at an approximate three point three seven percent increase in the, in the levy. Which would uh bring us uh close to fifty seven million. I can give you more figures if you want them, but uh and how that affects the average uh property taxpayer, that's an increase of two percent in property taxes for a countywide average tax rate of four point eight nine percent. I'm sorry, four, four dollars and eighty nine, I'm sorry, yeah, tax rate of four dollars and eight, eighty nine cents uh per thousand. Uh, as I said, it's uh an increase of two percent. I could give you more numbers, but uh don't want to lose you here. Uh, we have the county office for the aging is, is moving temporarily up to Lansing on Dutch Mill Road, and that's part of our efforts, moving several departments around to get ready to build our center, center of government. And we heard from some people that they didn't, you know, want that to be moved out of the city. Some people wanted us to move it out of the city. Uh, same thing with the Board of Elections. So the Board of Elections is going to be moving over to the County Office for the Aging Building. Uh, temporarily over near uh Department of Social Services. We had a lot of people come and talk to us about the flock, uh, security cameras that we use through the Sheriff's Department and through uh Ethica Police Department. And uh, most people did, were not in favor of us continuing to get a grant approving a gra, a grant for that. Um, it uh did narrowly pass. I, I don't usually tell you how I vote, but I'm going to just tell you how I voted on this. I did vote for us to continue with that, though, that grant. Um, and to continue with the flock cameras. So my, my thinking on that is uh, there are, uh, people do have a lot of concerns, uh, especially nowadays, is the further private information going to be shared? Uh, things like that. Are people going to be? Uh, is the information going to be used appropriately? Is it going to be uploaded and used in some way with, especially with the prevalence of AI? Is ICE going to get access to it? Um, but overall, there are a number of security measures that are in place by the company and with, uh, with us. And I, I think, uh, poss, that you guys use it also locally in Truementsburg. Right now, I'm feeling that the benefit to the community outweighs, I don't want to say people's concern, but I don't see, I, I don't, I, if people don't want to have them, I would like something else to be in place. Because I think we, we, it is, uh, as far as we can tell, helping cut down on crime, especially in the Ethica area. And we've heard from some neighbors that have them nearby and they, they feel much better and feel that the uh crime rate is going down. We uh, we are having a code blue shelter, you probably heard. So that's when temperatures that drop below uh freezing with windshield, we have to operate a code blue shelter so that anybody can get housing uh for the evening or for the night. And right now we're utilizing the old uh, location for found. So found was a, a used furniture and other items. Uh, place on Cherry Street and they, they moved over uh, to the other part of town. And so we're, we bought that, that location and we're also going to, that's where we're going to build our permanent shelter too. And we're thinking when we build the permanent uh shelter for people who are unhoused, that code blue uh, folks can be part of that or figure out at least how to integrate that because when we have staffing and services there, it makes sense to have everything closer together versus people running around trying to help people or who are staged at hotels. And we have increased, if you come down to a legislature meeting, you might, uh, you would see more security. We've had, uh, we don't advertise this very much or report out about it, uh, but we've had a lot more uh, concerns over the past couple of years. So uh, we are now uh enacting security measures at the, at, at least for legislature meetings when you come in. And we've had to deal with, as I'm sure you guys have, with health insurance costs uh going up through the healthcare consortium. Everybody's dealing with healthcare or health insurance costs going up. And we've instituted some lower cost options for employees and retirees. And sales tax, uh, September for the county was down fourteen point four nine percent. Year to date, we are still up four point zero four percent over last year. But that's still quite a bit down from where we'd like to be, but at least it's not lower than last year, but we were budgeting for probably at least a half a million more up, up till now. Uh, municipalities such as yourselves, uh, on average were up about one point nine three percent September uh, compared to the last year. And then year to date, up five point three six percent compared to last year. Last thing is, uh, which I know I've, you know, we've you guys are quite aware of this and I've been in some meetings with the mayor and the town and the food pantries about the SNAP benefits being cut and food insecurity. And uh, let's see, uh, on the federal level, what we're hearing is that it might be similar to what you're hearing. Is that about sixty five percent of the SNAP benefits are supposed to be coming? The federal government says they're going to, for November, that they're going to put them back on people's uh EBT cards. It could be a week or two, they're saying though. So still people are going to have, uh, you know, continuing to have some issues. And um, so in the meantime, we are trying to work with the food bank of the southern tier and with, like I said, municipalities and any kind of organizations we can to make sure there's enough food out there and connect people to uh to places where you can get food. And the best bank for our buck and for the food bank's buck is to direct people to food pantries where they can purchase food at either half price or a quarter of the price. And so that's the best way to uh, you know, uh, for us to be able to afford to feed as many people. And uh, you might have heard this, the Truementsburg Food Pantry was about six to ten percent above uh, what they usually get as far as the number of people. And uh, this, uh, that was last Monday and then uh true, or you, Enfield. Last week they were up about twenty percent of people coming in and Enfield has the biggest food pantry in the county and they usually serve about six hundred people. And they're open every week. So uh, last week they had about twenty percent increase. And then this past week, they had forty five percent increase. And uh, and I know you guys are going to help with figuring out where the next thing that's coming out from the food pantry is coming out to SNAP recipients. They're going to get um in some areas, not all areas of the county, but Truementsburg will be getting some and pardon me if that's already been talked about, but you'll be getting some boxes and I know you guys are figuring out where they're going to go. For, for some people on SNAP benefits, not for everybody on SNAP benefits, but for the people that we know that aren't connected to some other, to a food pantry or some other place to, to get food. And they'll, they'll be coming for at least maybe a week. We don't know if it's going to be a second week. And so we're still waiting to hear. So please correct me, Mayor, if I have any of that wrong. And that's all I had for now.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question. I was just wondering, I was downtown uh last week. And are there community members that go to uh, that maybe go throughout the city that uh talk to homeless people about where they can go for code blue? I'm specifically referencing just because I was down to the Seneca Street, walking past Seneca Street Bus Station. And all of the homeless people were inside the bus waiting area and all the people waiting for the bus were on the outside. There were sleeping bags and grocery carts and everything in that vestibule where people wait for the bus. And then the people waiting for the bus were on the outside. So I was just wondering if there were any community members that go around and say, you know, we need you to move, we have space for you, this is where you can go. Is there any type of volunteer organization or community organization that tells people where they can go?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Marsha. I know the um, I'm, I'm concerned because we had a community outreach worker that we were funding in conjunction with the City of Ethica. And we've, there, the last couple of years, there's been a number of issues that we've had trouble keeping staffing. Uh, and then we, so then we were trying to contract out for another agency to provide these people and we could not just couldn't find somebody that was uh able or willing to do that. And so now we're looking at another, we're, we're trying to figure out a different way to reimagine that system through what's, uh, so we might, so we're, we're in negotiations with the city on that. It might go back to, it's called a community outreach worker, or it might be what's called, um, I think, uh, it's through a cares program. I can't remember the exact name of it. And that's through, more through the police department. Um, so that, for instance, you, but maybe would ride along with the police officer and uh, reach out to these people. We, and then we also have through our DSS, Department of Social Services, we have sometimes people that go around and try and pick up people. It is not as robust as say a big city, a bigger city, they, they have vans and going around and sometimes buses going around and picking up people. You might have seen that. We just don't have the, the staffing to always do that. Um, but I will, I will check on that to, to, and that, so that was, which bus stop again? Did you say?
Uh, Seneca Street, the one titled Seneca.
Okay. All right, all right, the bus garage.
Right. It would be where the parking garage is, but there's a bus stick up right there. And there's like a glassed in vestibule that you can wait out of the weather for the bus. And it's, it was packed in there on uh, last Monday when I went by, but.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'll check and um, and then get back to you guys. I, I'm wondering if they were waiting for a ride or they were just trying to stay warm. Um, but I'll, I'll, I'll put it, put an alert out that, you know, that there's that, that type of thing is, is happening.
Yeah. And it was a nice day. I didn't even need a jacket. So there was an awful lot of stuff in that vestibule, like I said, sleeping bags, grocery carts. Things that people waiting for a bus would not probably get with them.
Right. So they, yeah, right. So they were probably just, anyway.
On for now.
Yep. Okay. But I'll, I'll pass that information on. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want any questions for me? All right. Well, thank you much.
You're welcome. Got to go shovel. So see you later.
See ya. All right, back to DPW Water Sewer City Yard Farmers Department.
Yeah, uh, let's start with the grant opportunity that I mentioned at the top. I was able to put a couple of things in the Dropbox. Get there myself. Basically, so we are a pro housing community, community designated. And along with that comes an opportunity to apply for a bunch of different grants, one of which is a technical assistance for growing pro housing communities. Um, and so that's kind of one thread of execution. The other thread of execution is there's um, some conversation on the corner of uh Halsey by the golf course with a property there and looking to develop that. And so there's been a bunch of conversations about like, well, what does the water needs and what's a water main look like? And what's the sewer? And how do we build that infrastructure so that the village might be up to village code? What is village code? And there's a bunch of these questions that come up. And we don't have really clear development regulations for water, sewer, roads, uh, stormwater, these sorts of things. Uh, and so MRB is kind of hodgepodge giving answers. Um, I'm sure they're probably fine. Uh, but it would be nicer to have kind of gone through the process of clarifying what is sewer, what are roads, what are uh stormwater, what is water kind of? What does the village development kind of regulations for those look like? By having that clarified, that saves everybody time and effort and money and helps developments bigger and small kind of all come up a little more quickly. So I got talking to MRB about that and then they suggested, well, hey, there's this technical assistance for uh grant from, for pro housing communities. Maybe we bring this together. Um, basically, you know, if we get the grant, that'll cover their fees for doing this. And that'll give us a better kind of set of regulations. So I thought it sounded pretty good. Um, they didn't get back to me in time with like a formal sign here, um, sort of contract, but what they're proposing is uh in the email that I put in the Dropbox, but basically it is a uh, one thousand five hundred dollars not to exceed based hourly for them to put together the grant application. Um, which I think seems reasonable. They said that they would take that out of their existing. I think they've got an existing grant application project number with us. So happy to answer more questions about that. There's a little bit more about the grant itself also in the uh, in the Dropbox. Um, but I'm interested in, in allowing that and kind of probably, I guess the thing to do would be to authorize Rowden to sign it once they've got a formal version of it for us. Once they've got a formal version of it for us. Um, I think they're looking at their total project. Being in the order of thirty thousand, thirty-two, five, something like that, but that would be coming out of the grant project. Should it be awarded, so. I guess maybe I'll start by just saying I I. Move that we approve Rorden to sign. Uh, a contract with MRB. I don't even know if this is actually even necessary for this amount of money. I don't know, we'll just. Maybe it's just a thumbs up because it's a number that I could just kind of approve. All right.
It would require a budget for location. There's only after the Moody's spend, there's only five hundred and forty dollars left in the engineering contractual.
So Moody's spend should have come out of water.
Okay.
We can move that around.
Then there's three thousand, so that's an engineering contractual a year.
This would be split between water sewer engine.
Okay, just wanting to have all of the, there's money to move, but I'm just.
But this, yeah, we we would probably. It would be five hundred out of each. Maybe developing sewer and water red also.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you for keeping us honest.
You're welcome. Now, for me, internal checking when I just said about this, just to be clear. And moving it.
You know, I think it's a good idea, certainly, I'd recommend. Stand it as far. Rights, which don't often get. Often come up, well, it seems like it's come up more in the last ten years and then the thirty-five.
The hope is that, you know, I mean, it's not that we're gonna see. Lots more like Forty-Six South, but I think we might continue to see a lot like on the corner there that comes in, ends up being two or three lots. And so. You know, if we see a little bit more of that, which I would certainly enjoy. This keeps coming up and I know the roads is a whole conversation of Forty-Six. I think if we had something like this, we would have saved a lot of confusion and conversation, so.
I can say truly selfish, I wish we could throw that. And do this.
Right.
Five years ago, it would have been immensely used.
Yeah.
I mean, the amount of time it honed about what this means. It was made immense. Uh, but did we, I won't remember a project long ago where you're gonna map all of our water sewer. Where you get that GIS stuff done? Does that exist?
We do have it and Dusty has access for water and sewer, not roads, I don't believe.
I was thinking that you talked about that. You got that.
Yeah, that was, well, I want to say it was last fall that they did most of the actual, like, there was flags out all over the village for a little while. That was them. Getting GPS locations for all the curb stops. Um, and I think is their. Yeah, so they've got pretty much everything at this point. And they're starting to use it as kind of an inventory, like as they're going and putting eyes on su- on water laterals for what type of equip uh, material that is, they're logging it there. Is that kind of the bigger?
Is there anything else we can bundle? It seems that.
Hmm, right, like.
Five million dollars.
Right.
And that's that, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, on the flip side of my being, we are sh- shooing, forgetting it would be my, I don't know, did like small amounts go further? No. You would probably know way better than I would. Um, I mean, I'm happy to. Cautious but happy to ask MRB like, hey, what else? Yeah.
I did misspeak, the Moody's has a no get.
Okay.
That's other contractual.
Okay.
That are not very. Hey.
Um. I mean, I'm happy to to see if there's anything else that is on their mind that they. Are aware of.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could find other things that we could spend that money on, for sure.
Okay, yeah. Well, I mean, I think it's it's things that. Without having looked at the details, my assumption is it's things that help. Housing development move more quickly, right? And so to your point, this is the kind of thing where if someone's gonna try and build something and instead of spending. Six months or a year going back and forth dusty, they just say like. Here's the document.
Yeah, because.
Um, that saves all sorts of things. I don't know. Part of me makes me wonder, like, I don't know if Mike thinks that there's any, I mean, I could ask, actually, maybe Mike Bailey instead as well to say, like, are there things? That he's come through. I'm sure it is. Yeah, I think it's all kind of like anything that helps move things more quickly. Um, so I could ask him.
Yeah, what's the name of some sort of software or something?
Uh, well, I know um, Tom was working on some software before he left.
He should something, so I was just.
Yeah.
It would be good to ask him.
So anyhow, I will, I'll poke around and see if there's anything else. It's a good point. There's, maybe we can do a little bit more here. Uh, let's see, other topics, um. One thing I wanted to kind of load here, I don't think there's any real. Be good to get like a kind of a grooming on a direction because I think there's a lot of communication to go with this. Um, is sidewalks no maintenance? So currently, I didn't. Deeply double check our sidewalk. Maintenance law, but off the top of my head, my understanding is that the DPW is required to maintain. All the sidewalks that have gone in by grants. So that's basically all the Main Street project, all the State Roots to Schools project. Um, it will include the future sidewalk up West Main. Um, but they actually cover a noticeable amount of sidewalk that is not, that is beyond that right now. Um, they do the other side of Main Street across from like Worden's house a little bit down there. Um, they do some Hector Street up to. I guess where the sidewalk ends, so they kind of part past the bridge a little bit there, yeah. Um, there's a couple other little like side spurts that they catch. Some of them like aren't the most unreasonable thing because they're kind of passing through it anyhow, but some of them. Add time and effort. Um, as they're looking forward to including more sidewalk as we build, they're kind of trying to see. How can we? Best manage our time without having to go get, you know, either have another person or another tractor to try and cover all this. Can we kind of consolidate down to really the core parts of what the village is responsible for? Um, and so I'm. I'm open to that conversation and chatting with them. I think basically the parts of Main Street that have not, that were not part of the Main Street project, so mostly across the street from from Morden's place. Um, Hector Street and then also up Dorsey Hill, which is like not really a sidewalk. There's just like blacktop there. It's confusing and I think they could just plow it. Wider and be done. Um. If we were to drop those, they feel like, especially because some of those parts are like more annoying to manage because they're not kind of nice, fresh sidewalk. They feel like they could probably take on the new stra- stretch of sidewalk up. Up Main Street. Without too much extra effort. Especially because the newer stuff is the easiest stuff to plow. It's straight, it's clear, just go for it. Um. So that would be my proposal is to let them kind of drop some of these sections that we are not required to be plowing, but we have kind of been in. As, I don't know, as the village doing a nice job doing that. Um. The reason I wanted to bring it here is mostly because. People have gotten used to that, I'm sure, and will be a little frustrated if it stops. Um. And I wanna get out ahead of it. So I actually would propose that this wouldn't happen this year because we don't need to yet because it would run the sidewalk, but. We kind of tie it to that and start getting people aware of it and getting out the word. Uh, you know, a couple of times over the next year, maybe at the state of the village and then kind of again, as we get closer to um. Whatever winter, once we have the sidewalk and that kind of thing, so. Wanted to bring up here, see if people have opinions, strong, no's, whatever it might be, and we can talk about it.
I have two questions, I guess, about this is, and these are like more general questions. Um, does the village, I don't even know, this is a homeowner, what is the homeowner's responsibility? For the sidewalk that is around their home of being plowed?
If it's not the village's responsibility, the homeowner is responsible and it's, there's a, like, if it's more than a dusting, you're responsible for clearing it in a certain period of like twenty-four, forty-eight hours. It's in the law and I don't remember the details off the top of my head. I don't think there's any enforcement because I think the sidewalks. To a large extent that are passable enough to be passable, we've just been managing and all the rest have been slate and no one really cares.
Yeah, people walk.
Going back in time. Yeah, sidewalks, the list of village that's. So.
Mm-hmm.
Sidewalks, any enhancements? We might wanna add some, I'm thinking more like, does shale count as a sidewalk? Right, like, I can't imagine trying to shovel the side. Like, just wouldn't mind. Right, Cuba Street, an idea of shoveling inside of it.
Oh, yeah, just insane.
Just. All time.
Right.
Could be terror. Uh, so I can't. But if we had some idea.
And then I guess my other question is. Um, with the roads that you just men- mentioned and. Since we're always talking about walkability. Um, are those areas used heavily by people that walk? And is it more other than a benefit to the people that actually walk there to continue to shovel? For the village to continue to shovel?
Yeah, so the. Hard to say. The Dorsey Hill one, I think, is the one people are most concerned of because maybe kids, because kids are kind of coming out the da- far side of Cuba. To getting to school, but I think my impression there is that because there isn't actually a sidewalk, it's more like the sidewalk, like it's just like a painted shoulder or something. I'm actually not. But I think they should plow it. So I think, I think they can do that. Um, Main Street. There's a better sidewalk on the other side of Main Street, so I think that's pretty good. Halsey would be the questionable one. Um, but I think the thing is, it's not that it. It won't be plowed as nicely and as regularly as the village is doing it, but I think. We need to build a muscle, honestly, as a community in like clearing sidewalks a little more regularly because we don't have that. We have never enforced it. So are we gonna enforce it? I don't know. That's like the real question, I suppose, behind this whole thing is. If we have the desire to actually go enforce it.
I used to make so much money to not shovel in people's driveways and sidewalk. We don't see much of that anymore.
That's true, yeah.
So I was looking at, I'm looking at this, looking at the sidewalk law, so I was trying to remember something. We actually designated. Everything from Hector Street to. The town village line at Smith Woods. As sidewalk history. So I don't think.
On both sides?
The way it was just. Hector Street to the village line, so I think.
Oh, so then that's.
They can't drop the north side of Main Street.
Ah, yeah.
The section, I do recall the section from the quarter at Burn in Maine. Up to Peace or wherever.
Right.
Is not part of that.
Yeah, okay.
We have not amended this, should. We have not amended this to include South Street. Or the section on Lake down at the bridge. Those two sections need to be added to this, so we'll need to amend this at some point. As probably as part of. Final completion of the new sidewalk.
Yeah.
So that would be the time to talk.
To kind of bring it all together. Yeah, and I would argue to actually drop that north side of Maine because it's old and and. Poorly maintained, it's actually really difficult for them to plow. So like, that's, that was the kind of thing that that was a little bit eye opening to me is like. A, you know, block of sidewalk is not a block of sidewalk everywhere. It's when the new stuff. They can burn through that. They can get down to all the way through South Street in a hurry. Um, you know, that stuff's easy.
We'll wanna, we'll wanna. Look at how we're gonna bend this down to Midwest.
Yep.
And have Guy look at it because we're obligated to clear Lake. Lake connects to the north side of Maine. Crosswalk to the school probably doesn't count. So we'll wanna just check. We'll have to, we'll have to have somebody to be oriented or be able to go back and talk to the seniors, school people. See what we're obligated for. And I have a, this is. Summer back in my head, go back ways, but I have a feeling we might be stuck in the mainstream.
I don't.
I hope not, but I.
I, I, I wouldn't, I don't know either which way, but it seems odd to me that we would have to plow away from the school. From the South Street, from Lake Street. I mean, Lake Street comes in dead ends at the school. I don't see why we'd have to go plow. Down Main Street from there, but. Grants be grants, who knows what they require.
I'm sure we need to amend this to include South Street.
Yeah.
And then Wesley.
So I think what I'm kind of hearing is, yeah, like, I'll put a reminder for a year or something with some notes for myself. Um, once we have. We're getting closer to completion on that and then we'll kind of bring this all together and. Clarify what we're plowing, what we're not plowing and put it in there. And then make sure we actually follow what the law is.
I think there's still a kid. Spring twenty-seven, Westley.
Yeah, that's kind of my recollection too.
Definitely will want to be. What we're responsible for. Yeah, we're. Not responsible for sections that would never. Actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so spring would actually be a perfect time that if we're kind of doing it, then we can start messaging it. In the fall or early area, you know, just kind of continuing to remind people that that's coming. Uh. Let's see, so then last thing, this is kind of brief, just to haul it out because I did send out an email about it, but just to talk it about it in public meeting. Um, we've got a new set of roles and responsibilities for the farmers market um, that we're drafting. I don't. I think we can have, if we want to have a conversation, we can now, or I was gonna plan on kind of bringing it, putting it actually in the agenda. We can talk about it. More specifically um, next time if there's any other questions, but. I think we're slowly starting to take steps towards having a friends of the market group, which would be fantastic. Um, and. I think we're in a pretty good spot with the roles and responsibilities to try and just clarify everything for everybody, so. Just a quick update on that one, unless anyone else had any more questions or concerns they wanted to chat about with that.
Yeah, I think that's great.
All right. Then that is it for me.
Hey, um, please show us.
Yes. Pull up. So I did miss September, so let me pull up September. That's. All right, so for September, uh, there were two hundred and eighty-eight. Calls for Truementsburg Police Department. Two calls for services outside the village uh, within the town of Ulysses. Um. Truementsburg Police Department Assistant, uh, Tompkins County Sheriff Department. With an animal problem inju- injured deer on Perry City Road and. EMS overdose, Waterbird Road. Uh. Criminal investigations, there were four larceny theft investigations, five domestic disputes. Two criminal mischief, four harassments, one trespass, one fraud investigation and three. Motor vehicle crashes. Um, non-criminal, there were a hundred and four property checks, of which four properties were found to be unsecure. Ninety-two. Uh, officer initiated stops. And enforcement, sixty-two of those were traffic tickets. Um, there was one parking complaint, fifteen informational inquiries, background checks. For pistol crimes. Uh, so that was September. And then October. It's still so September. It's still so September. October, there were three hundred and one calls for service, three calls were outside the village. Um, Tompkins County Sheriff Department for domestic dispute on Truansburg Road. Uh, structure fire on Taganic Boulevard. Uh, and. Motor vehicle crash on Taganic Boulevard. Um, criminal investigations, there was one domestic dispute, harassment, one fraud investigation. Three motor vehicle crashes and one DWI arrest in the village. Uh, noncriminal, there were a hundred and fifteen property checks. Uh, three properties were found to be insecure from our property checks. Uh, ninety-three. Uh, police stops and of those fifty-two were ticketed. And two parking complaints. And then twenty-four background checks for pistols. Um. So those were the reports from Chief Nelson. Um, and then we discussed. I just had something and lost it, um. So one of our officers has completed, um, training for, uh, to be a. Uh, DOT. Uh, inspector, so they are able to inspect commercial vehicles within the village. Um, and they did receive that certification. Um, so they will be able to do additional stops and. Also checks on those vehicles and that would include, um, logging. A log books that includes like the times that they, that people are working. With, uh, to and from travel, uh, their registration, fire safety. Um, they are considered a routine stop, so it's not necessarily an. An addition as far as work is concerned, it's just an additional certification of this person who's received. Uh, which is great. Um.
Chief, I have a question. Um.
Is that it?
I was just gonna ask, does Chief have a plan in terms of where those trucks will be? Pulled over to?
Um, I don't think so, I think at this time, in order for this person to get their certification, they have to do a. It was planned but not announced, um, stop. Um, that included, I think, Tompkins County, someone from Tompkins County. To help them do these stops and it was at. Um. I feel like he told me it was DPW. Um.
With the.
Um, by the farmer's market. Um, but there isn't like a particular place. Um, at this time. Do you have? Suggestions?
No, it's just when we were fighting the garbage truck. Fifteen years, ten years ago, whatever it was. The two issues were, one, we didn't have to certify. And two, we didn't have a good place to.
Oh, right.
Which. In hindsight, I think. Was probably more a lack of a desire or. That the chief truly pushed that, gee, certification is what it is, we didn't have. It's not likely to pull over someone speeding. In front of my house, it's harder to pull over. Crash all over. Anywhere on Main Street.
Great.
But. We can make space.
I don't know about that, because I mean, there have been trucks that are so bold as to park in the street of Main Street now, so. You know, which is extremely annoying as a driver, but.
Which now that we have certified. DOT Inspector, maybe. That would help getting this driver to actually not invest in the county.
I will bring that up for the team. I think that is. Right.
Because they've been told several times, just looking towards the other side of the street. And although it's not ideal for them to turn up, hell, stop. It's better than sending them home and stay low.
Right.
With other trucks coming back, back.
Yeah. Okay. Um. We did, uh, have a crossing guard for a little while at the farmer's market, um, through the end of their season. I got really great feedback about it, um, Chief Nelson got good feedback about it as well as Rainey, the passing guard. Um, so I guess. I'm really looking to see if this will continue. Um, for next season farmer's market and. What would be an ideal? Time, does it make sense to have somebody there? At the very beginning of the season when the season is a little slow or. Only during a particular time within that season. Um, that is also. A budget concern, I guess, to actually figure into next year's budget. Um, so I did reach out to Ben to see if that's something the, um, the farmer's market folks would wanna. Talk about. Um. But it's also on my mind too and on the list of. My things to do whenever budget comes up. Um. A lot of trick or treaters for October, the streets were closed. Um, even though it was raining, I know it was packed with trick or treaters, just. Trying to get their candy and get up.
I know, I always feel sorry for those people on the lake in South and up on the.
The older, the easier it is.
Oh, and we had one trick or trader, we, you, before we started closing the roads off, you stayed a lot more happy. You know, it was down to you guys, like, yeah, I'm gonna give this amount of money on.
Dark and scary with those sidewalk.
Yeah, and I guess it's the same thing that we talked about last year, is it truly beneficial to close, close out the streets? Because then those are the only streets that really see trick or treaters.
I, I think everybody likes it, though.
I mean, some streets. Some streets, Washington Street, um, have taken it to be like a whole thing, show event type thing. And I feel like if you live on Washington Street, you better have something.
Wow.
Um, so, so yes, I agree with that. Um, there, there was only, I think, one complaint. Um, on Union Street, there were, I guess, people parked. There, it was really difficult to. Turn. Um, that was the only complaint, I think there was actually somebody that was ticketed. Um, in that area, uh, the other thing that Chief Nelson said was that area is. Is dark, um. So. I guess lighting maybe is something to look at in that area. Um, to see if there really is a problem with lighting and to see if.
The road runs, it's just a very short dead end road. And there's no, like, if they had it stopped at the end of the Union. And you, and you push us out, I'll. You know, but then, well, the walk is just awkward, it's just an awkward line.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, I, I didn't even realize, like, this was. Our discussion this morning, so. Um, there. Um, as Annie mentioned earlier, there is another tech grant, um, that will be available, um. And Chief is planning to, um, secure some funds with that. And it is technology related. Um, items for the police department, so it does not include things like firearms or tasers or things like that. Um, so we are in discussion on what that equipment might entail. Or that technology might entail, I know that we currently have to. Have one computer that needs to be replaced, plus another computer within a vehicle that needs to be replaced. Um, I think. Um, the chief is leaning towards maybe looking to see if this grant would cover. An electric police car. Um. Which, I don't.
We have charters now.
Yeah.
Uh, one other thing is the flag is long ago. I can't really tell you about how, you pretty soon people are not all the time. And the reason was that, uh. Pretty often, computers is really time consuming. And I believe Chief mentioned with those battery pack, you can use, so that would be about a whole car, it's like. You can use some kind of backup battery, but. You'd have to ask if this was, this was years ago, but. That would be more tasking to it, if the, the fold would be is too big of a, like, there might be something in there, I don't know, maybe it was. Probably provided of.
Check down most bad break backs.
They make it, they make it tough or tighter.
Stuff.
A law enforcement package down.
Yeah.
So, Joe, you can find your answer. Probably be a UK. If you think that wrong. But you haven't, that's like a priority that's eight feet tall.
We'll see. And I'm not keen on, my thing is, if we, if we're buying technology, are we still gonna be able to maintain it? After that money is gone. So although, yes, you do have to maintain a gas vehicle. What is the additional maintenance on that? What is the additional insurance on that? Um, so.
For the used, making sure the way of that, that's going to be accessible.
Unless she battery goes.
As long as those are the warrants, we only have a police car at the moment. Uh. If, if, if we can do the initial hatch out like to purchase it, it's not equally good for a budget. Service, if you get a gram of it, something like that, it's the replacement cost. But I would not plan on doing a replacement cost, I'm not fifty-two one, though. Unless they're corporate. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put on fifty thousand dollars machine, that's, that's teach.
Okay. I. I am still looking to be convinced. Um.
Ten percent of our, you know.
So, yeah, so that was like the one big ticket item that he was looking to perhaps, uh, include on this for him. Um. I think. I feel like I'm missing something, but for now, that's all.
Okay, uh. Our treasurer's office.
So I'll give the tiny little brief updates of office, uh, business, but then I did just email you language that should be read into the. Um, minutes for proving everybody, okay, they did. Um, so, we're gonna talk about the ban and old business for the, um, grant for the tax grant on the sidewalk, or new business. Whole business, but we did submit the first reimbursement to the DOT to help cover, um, some of the. Uh, grant writing card from MRB. Um, and then there'll be a timeframe, I think, that MRB, Matt McKenna's working on this, or help this board understand. Where that whole process will come, the stopper period ends on the seventeenth, which is the notice that we are. Having this, um, happen, um. And the CPA review, which is called like a mini audit, or I don't remember the exact term, instead of full, full, full audit. They're here for one day. Instead of four, which was great, um, and so I appreciate everyone's patience, uh, last week while I was, uh, pretty distracted helping. With that information, um, the AFR was submitted in, in September, I haven't heard anything back from the OST, which is a pretty good sign that they're. Hugging away through all of that, I don't. That's great, so I'm getting really budget focused because we're, uh, completed month five. So looking at the half year spend and you'll see that there's the, uh, report for October expenditures and revenues, um. Which always includes the, um, reserve, so it's deeper in the report, but if you're curious about those for your departments, it's always there. Can also ask me, um, pretty up to date with those numbers usually, so I'm gonna. Uh, remind us that if you have a zero, if a department head has a zero percent remaining in their budget. Technically, it's something that the board should talk about because it does require at some point a budget modification. Not really allowed to say, yes, we can spend that if you have no money. Um, it, there's very few areas where they're further out that, I also want to point out that I'm gonna look deeper at the fuel lines. Which I highlighted everything across the board that was less than fifty-eight percent. Okay, you're welcome, fuel billing is confusing, and so we'll work on that, especially as we're approaching the budget season, um, because they, they bill. Sometimes January through May in the next year, sometimes, like, I think we can get tighter on this and. Especially police departments, for example, not being so blown out of the water that their fuel is way more than we thought it was going to be, uh. So we're not about. There's also an overtime report in the Dropbox for Fire Nameless for October, thanks to just whoever for helping pull that together. And I think we're, I'm ready to see if you will discuss that, um. Relevy of the unpaid twenty-twenty-five village property taxes, which the report is in the Dropbox. Um, and there's some special language to make happen for that, so that we can send a check out to.
Right, so we have every year a number of. Village property tax bills that go unpaid, that's what we, that we had. To the county reimburses us. Uh, upfront. And then those, that money is. Placed on the county tax bill that comes out of January. And so I would entertain a motion to re-levee our unpaid village property taxes to Tompkins County. The village board having received a report of the twenty-twenty-five unpaid village property taxes submitted by the tax collector. Describing each parcel of real property upon which taxes are unpaid. Person or persons in whose name the property is assessed and the amount of unpaid taxes. And having compared the unpaid. Taxes. Uh, to, let's see, and having compared the unpaid account to the twenty-twenty-five tax rule. Certifies that there are seventy-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and seven cents in unpaid taxes and penalties to be sent to Tompkins County. For collection. And I entertain a motion to that effect. So.
Second.
Economists, questions or discussion?
I do, and it requested a roll call.
So, village or tree. Really like unusual stuff that.
There's a village of Truansburg property.
Yeah.
That's the last entry, so I meant to look up the tax now.
Sorry, not known, so. Um. Uh, okay, well, that's something I've seen, that doesn't actually make sense. Are you looking at the cars? Tax. It's a weird looking person.
Right.
What's it saying about you man? Oh, it will be, okay, um. To untangle that, I have a big computer. To see the bad. Property.
Um, you gotta run upstairs and do it.
Yeah, I gotta run this, so I just table this and I'll pop up. Or I'm having, I need to get this to the county before.
It's our water tower.
It's on my water. Now I need the tax.
Or as a cell tower on the water tower, is that possible?
This should be managed, they'll transfer, um, so, so to be clear, the software, again, file from the county, I upload it. People make payments, it gets taken off and then the unpaid is removed, so.
I think we can re-levee the amount and have assessment figure out that piece. I'll check with the.
I think in my. I think it might just be like, uh. So the owner on, in the Tompkins County assessment, it says owners is Village of Trumanburg. Attention Tower Property Tax Team. Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. Uh. So I wonder if they're just using our name. As the like. Has the. Yeah.
Don't all look into that, okay? Okay.
Yeah.
He's.
Great.
Cause they very quickly. Each, usually they have the.
Owner. Okay.
Cause actually it look, yeah, it looks like the same for the T-Mobile. Tower as well, says Village of Trumanburg, T-Mobile, P O Box in Bellevue, Washington.
Okay, so, I mean.
Yep.
Best protocol role.
Okay, Jessica Martin. Yeah. Okay, uh, Timothy Mayor Harder. All right. Mayor Harder.
Hi.
Uh, trustee Derek.
Yes.
Trustee Hayden.
Yes.
Are there any other affirmatives we could use? Trying to like, keep it. Words have power.
Hey, anything else from the treasurer's office?
Yeah, looking forward to this one of the period and paying more out to general. And spending more reporting and pulling together, maybe, maybe cover, I'm supposed to pull together the first quarter of EP charging. Next month, even after. Yeah, okay.
I got, I got into politics and grants, I mean.
Hundred forty-five dollars has been deposited to the general fund, so.
Oh, we have to sign it.
Oh, yeah, you gotta sign it.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about this.
All right, if there's nothing else for.
Oh, just, um, this.
Something else for Jessica, then we'll move on to seven, which is old business. Uh, we will formally open. Our sealed bid for. Roof renovation in spring. Uh, we have thirty days to respond. And obviously, you know, what's seen us, so we're gonna bring in the details of it, but I will just formally announce that it looks like we have. One bid and one bid only. From. From, uh, Michael Snyder Construction. So we will review. This then. DPW. And. determine whether we want to accept it or not, uh, the recommendation. As to whether to accept this or not.
So I'll scan that and send it to the justices.
Consider the bid. Process completed. For the roof on the building in which we sit. Um. Other item of old business is. Moving. On anticipation note, those West Main Street Sidewalk project. Detail for us.
Uh, the detail of that is that they are, uh, the, the suggestion from bond, not bond council, so municipal solutions, bond council is for if they're separate, but. Um, saying that we should request six hundred thousand dollars to get through those first amounts, um, before full reimbursement comes, um. Based on MRB's cash flow projections, uh, that that would not come to us until January, uh, cause it takes sixty to process and receive. And I, this will be my first ban rodeo, where, so all of their language was. You sign, you sign, you sign, I don't know if that's a mayor science or the treasurer's science, okay.
It's very much you want.
Okay, so I don't really, I don't know the magic words for this word at this time.
Right, so, uh, that's, that part's easy, so I would entertain a motion to approve. The issuance of a bond, so just to explain before. Uh. We have two point six million brand money for the West Main Street Sidewalk. The entire project and associated grant money is reimbursed. So as bills come in, we have to pay it. Submitted for reimbursement. MRB is projecting that at any given time, we may need to have as much as six hundred thousand available in that, in that cycle, since we don't have an extra six hundred thousand just floating around. In our general fund. Uh. We take out a bond anticipation note, which. If there was an overage in the project for which we would have to borrow, the bond anticipation would become so long term bond feature. If the grant covers the whole thing. Then the bond anticipation of like a year to year bond. Simply gets closed out of the year. On the project. Um, the small bits that we owe on. South Street. Like some, those were all bridges banned for that project. What's the advantage over just the standard uncredit? Municipality's or street. Someone plans to kind of. Access the space that we lie, this is just. Um, yeah, so I would entertain a motion to. Approve the issuance of a bond anticipation note for the tap West Main Street Sidewalk project. In the amount of six hundred thousand dollars, so.
Second.
Other, any other comments or questions?
Let's build a sidewalk.
So. That starts spending money in it. Uh, January, anyway, whatever money is. Uh, okay, and all in favor of approving the issuance of the ban and the amount of six hundred thousand, we say aye.
Aye.
Can we post? The extensions. We have any other items of old business? Any other items of new business? Not that they remember as a public presently person online, we have the executive session, and. Then I would. Entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss. National potential EMS cycle, so.
Second.
All in favor?